It's not both.
Oh, possibly.
If we have to go to the back like I said, you discovered probably the.
I just missed you.
I'm going.
Richard, did you just press the button on the boiler to switch it back on?
That one. Yes, it was one more forward to the.
Before I go, before I go.
Thank you very much. It's thirty, so we will make a start. Welcome everybody to the August meeting of full council. Um, I think we've had two apologies perhaps and senses still and then Carol, is that?
And Ben.
Oh, and Ben, Ben.
Richard.
And Richard.
And Richard.
And I was going to say Sally, but she's sitting in front of me.
Yes, Sally's here. Uh, okay, um, are there any declarations um of interest? I've set out in the uh. Appendix to your papers. No, okay, thanks. You have to excuse me because I thought the wrong glasses and I can't see. I would, I would punch you with that. Um, members of the public, if you've got any members of the public that would like us to to ask us a question.
Do you want to speak first, man?
No, okay, thank you. Um, the mayor's report, okay, uh, I attended the the open day at New Is Malwinn. Which was, uh, sorry, Niasse. Okay, thank you for correcting pronunciation, I'm grateful. Um.
I said you haven't got your glasses.
No, I know, but my pronunciation doesn't rely on my glasses, unfortunately. But no, it was it was definitely worth worth the visit. Um, I think they've done a pretty good job. Um, I did a tour of the building and the um. Uh, and the gardens and the uh. It it all looks great, I have to say. Um, I I think it's going to be successful, I hope so anyway. Uh, come down the market again, that was pretty good. I spoke to to each of the traders. Uh, we were favored by the weather again, not quite so nice as last year, but 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 good. Um, not so many traders as before, um, the football I think was about the same. Um, and all the traders I spoke to seemed very pleased with it all, and I'm sure that they will be back next year or a lot of them will. Um. Yeah, I I have to say that the the state after the market had finished and been cleared away was so much better than last year. Um, credit to the traders themselves, of course, but also to to our staff. Who facilitated that. It was it was much improved. In fact, it was uh, it was probably cleaner than before it started, so that was great. Uh, the mayor's parade and the civic service. Um, thanks to to all those councillors that that attended that and the ones that apologised. Um, a few, a few people that that weren't there that perhaps should have been, but uh, no, thank you all. Um, and it all went very well, I think. Uh, I did have the opportunity to speak to some of our visiting bears. Uh, after the event, uh, from Montgomery and and Newtown. Uh, we we had an interesting discussion and we're going to get together again. To look perhaps at ways that we can collaborate a little more closely with our our neighbouring communities. Um, and then we can bring things to our councils that uh might be generally beneficial to all. I think, and I I I will come back to this maybe later, um, Paris is just too darn big, isn't it? Um, you know, a lot, a lot of what happens is is not very relevant to us. We're, we're, we live in an area that has its own economy, it's it's owned. And we're, it's very sparsely populated part of the county. Um, and sometimes we can be overlooked or even ignored, and I think the more towns in the area can work together. The louder will be our voice, and I I think it's time we started to get a bit loud. Uh, because so much, so much of what we recommend to Paris. It 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 is simply put to one side, and I cannot recall a single consultation. In recent history where whatever we've said has made a blind bit of difference to what they do. Yes, Nick.
Like you said, uh, Chair, that I keep seeing on social media that Public County Council have carried out a public consultation on this, that, whatever. I have never once ever been consulted by Public County Council on anything.
Hmm, hmm, yeah. Well, I I think, I think, I mean, I won't say we need to get militant, we certainly need to get louder. And um, and hopefully we can do that.
Sally.
Uh, Sally, yes.
Oh, you're on mute, Sally.
Sal, you're on mute. You're muted now. Sal, you're on mute.
Right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Right, I just want to say about the community awards and how lovely it was. It was so nicely done this year. So pat on the back to everybody involved in that. It was such a pleasure to be there. And yeah, it was lovely. So I had a really nice afternoon. So thank you. I just want to say, well done.
Thank you. And thanks for your very kind sponsorship, and that was going to be the last item on my mayor's report anyway.
Okay, I just wanted to say, it was just so lovely. It was really nice. So sorry I missed the church service, but I did make it to that, so. So thank you very much. It was just lovely. Thank you.
Um, yeah, there were some very worthy uh winners this year and chosen from a very diverse group of.
Yeah.
Normans, and it was difficult to make a choice, but yeah, that that all went very well.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's the end of that. Um. Are there any county councillors actually here? Um, I know Richard and Carol have both given apologies. Graham isn't here. So I don't think we have. Of course we do, yes.
Um, I don't think I've got it. Um, I think he sent it to councillors, and I'm not on the councillor mailing list, so I didn't get it, but thank you, thanks.
I have not either.
Yes.
Okay, I I've seen it, but it it isn't with papers, there was an email. Bill, shall I read it out?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Can you see it?
Well, I'll try, I'll try.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Welsh Town Council, yeah, County Council's report, my apologies for non-attendance, I'll be at the Royal Welsh Show.
Did you push the mic, Rob, please?
Yes, that means I'll have to hold this out over here. Uh, I'll be at the um Royal Welsh Show, uh, cheering the launch of Fast Track Paris. Fast Track Paris is part of a Wales-wide initiative to combat AIDS HIV. Uh, to reducing the stigma and promote testing and treatment so that no one suffers from ill health as a consequence of AIDS HIV. Fast Track County has set the aim of ninety-five. Ninety-five, ninety-five, ninety-five percent of all people living with HIV should be diagnosed, ninety-five percent of all people diagnosed on treatment. And ninety-five percent of all people on treatment having an undetectable, untransmissible viral load. I chair the steering group leading this project, which involves Paris County Council, Paris Teaching Health Board. And many voluntary organisations. I look forward to any opportunities to to promote the campaign in Welshpool. Uh, and he goes on um to the Berrier Street car park. And says town councillors will be aware that the county council has agreed to transfer part of Berrier Street car park to the housing service. To enable the building of thirty-two new council homes. Uh, there is an acute shortage of affordable housing in the town, and this goes some way. Alongside development at the former Gunbrook School site to provide homes for affordable rent to meet local demand. Uh, the proposal will now be subject to detailed plans and in due course of planning applications. Concerns have been raised by the Welshpool Scouts over parking arrangements for the cash app. Powers Council need to ensure that there are adequate reserved and uh reserved car parking spaces for their needs. The remaining car park will provide over fifty parking spaces, but this could be increased by the removal of the disused toilet block. I have made that point and will continue to press for its transfer back to Paris County Council as long as no alternative use can be found for it. Uh, and then the anti-poverty fund, as I reported at the last meeting, each councillor will can can apply for funding. Uh, up to five thousand pounds for small community projects to tackle poverty in their area. Paperwork is now being completed for two thousand five hundred pounds for my share. Being used to support summer holiday activities of the Featherseed Centre. Targeted to holiday activities and experiences for young people. Whose families are unable to provide holidays or activities during the summer. Uh, the second part of my fund I propose to use towards the establishment of a community fridge in the town hall. This would enable us to extend the give and take offer. Uh, that we currently run during the harvest season from August to October to throughout the year. Donations of surplus produce could be stored in a fridge freezer and made available on a regular supervised pre-arranged basis to those in need. A community fridge will also complement the work we do in the hub to support those in need. Uh, this is tabled for discussion on tonight's agenda, and I look forward to the feedback. Parking, uh, I noticed there is a motion to be debated on car parking charges. One aspect of the new rates that has not been widely reported is the introduction of a new discounted rate for people using just one car park on a regular basis. The cost of two hundred and eighty pounds for an annual ticket, a hundred and fifty pounds for six months, ninety pounds for three months, and thirty pounds for one month. Lastly, on the household waste recycling centre, councillor Jerk says. Following the debate at the last council meeting, I am arranging uh an online meeting for councillor Julie Arnold and any others who would be interested with Ashley Collins. The manager of the Waste and Recycling Service and the portfolio holder Jackie Charlton. This will feed into the review of a new of the new arrangements which will be happening in the coming months. The meeting will probably be online. Please let me know if you would like to attend. Okay.
We all sent that, Chairman.
It is councillor Richard Church, who's unable to be here, but has submitted his written report.
It's noticeable that I haven't received one. I just checked all my emails, none.
Uh, Alison.
Uh, it was just one point is, um, with regard to the Berryou Street Car Park. Uh, can I raise the issue again of the um drivers using that car park in the evening to race around? Practice their handbrake turns, et cetera. Um, it is extremely distressing for the people that live, particularly in the flats at the bottom of New Street.
Yeah.
And um, I I am particularly concerned about this. Um, we have approached Paris before, and we have also, this is, we've approached them formally about that. And we've also approached the police. All that has been done is that Paris said there was nothing they could do, although we came up with several suggestions. And the police said they would check the car park. Now, anybody that has any experience of being in that area in the early evening knows that these. Um, activity, these two efforts have been summarily fa- complete failures.
Okay.
It's frightening for the people that live there, and I think we need to do something about it for those residents.
It it's gen- it's generally, not not just there, it's in other locations in the town. I don't know what we call them. Let's let's call them boy races.
But they're not all boys.
They're not all men, they're not, they're not.
No.
I know that the police uh have um questioned some people.
Yeah.
And uh, and are trying their best to to do something, but, you know. We'll see, councillor Richard.
I agree entirely with what you said, Chairman. I I live alongside the car park, as you know. Um, and so many people in the bungalows by me uh get disturbed and all, it's sort of. I've got to say, I'm rather fortunate because my bedroom is actually on the bend, uh, so I don't hear a lot of it. But the old people who live around by me are complaining, and I've been for four or five years, and not a thing has been done. And, you know, I know our priests are very busy and this and the other, but at the end of the day, it's about looking after the people of Welshpool. And they're they're not, they're not really doing anything. Come on, let me, let me be blunt about it, and I'll say it outright. They have cars that don't have all yellow and green and whatever on.
Hmm.
They have cars that are not marked at all.
Yes.
It'd be quite easy to sit there because at the end of the day, they've got a camera out, out, on the outside of the car park.
Hmm.
They know exactly what cars are going in there and this and the other. All we want is some action.
Yes.
There there's a secondary thing on that, on that car park, Chairman. I've got a view. I know you might not agree with me, but I've got a view that. When the, when the Scouts organisation about ten years ago. Uh, applied for a grant and and asked for planning permission to put the new, take the old one down and put the new one up and all it. It was actually specified by the planning people and by Welsh Town Council then. That uh, because the the planning people said they are not preserving any parking for anybody. It's an open car park where people play, and that's how it's been, right? The interesting part about that was that when all of school were going. The parents of bringing kiddies to school in the morning and in the afternoon had a half an hour. Uh, leeway, half past eight till nine o'clock in the morning and quarter to quarter past four in the afternoon. That was okay, but I think it's a very dangerous precedent to reserve spaces just because somebody lives on the on the curtilage of the car park. Because I live on the curtilage of the far car, car park, so why can't I have one, right? Uh, and I don't agree with it. I don't think that it's right that the county council should allocate any organisation. Free car park and all this, particularly when they've just said that all the blue valjorders, all in this county, are going to start paying up.
Hmm.
Firstly, they take three hundred quid every Christmas off them. Secondly, they take, they take the 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 allowance of the blue valgys off them. What the hell is going on, right?
Hmm.
Um, uh.
Thanks, Phil.
The, I I think the then the point that is of concern is we came up with proposals. With a range of suggestions, including these pumps within the car park that are actually bolted down. And they can be removed for things like when the circus is there. Everything we suggested, it was no.
Hmm.
And the reality is, we are not the professionals in how to manage this. The police and Paris County Council are, but they need to manage it because at the moment they're not, and it is horrible right now.
It it it.
And all the way up the main street.
Is is there, i- is is there a proposal to move this on? I know that we we are asking. The the uh, the police particularly to provide us with um a periodic report on crime generally or policing during i- in in the town. I think we specifically need answers and figures in relation to. Uh, vandalism certainly and probably the nuisance of them.
Yeah.
You know.
Joyriders.
Joyriders, and 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 require the police to actually tell us what investigations have been made and what progress they're making to resolving it. I think.
I would also.
Did I get my turn?
So, so Paul, yes, sorry.
Nick, sorry.
I just heard, well, it's something slightly on a different part of Richard's report. It's to do with car parking.
Hmm.
But when they raised the prices about, was it two or three years ago? It went from a pound an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It went, the one hour went up to one pound thirty, and then they took the one hour option away. They've now reintroduced the one hour, but they've slipped it up to one pound fifty, so that's another twenty percent rise.
Yeah.
On that one hour park, I just, no wonder.
We're, we're coming on to the the car park charges increases la- later in the agenda.
Uh, can we propose that we ask our town clerk to write to Paris County Council regarding. The management of the car parks and the joyriders who are using particularly Berryou Street car park, but it may well be. The Mill Lane as well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Technical, yeah.
Yes, and I think we need, we need to actually require Palace to manage their car parks. Because this is having a really negative effect on the most vulnerable of our residents.
Okay, that's the proposal you said, second, okay, thank you. So we have a vote on whether we should do that, please? Well, that's, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good thing.
Chairman, can I ask another question? I'm in the same head, it was a primary council session. I am told, and I make this quite boldly, I am told that in a recent term cabinet meeting in Paris. Councillor Church voted for taking away the sixth form of Welsh High School. Now, if our councillors in this town are not going to support our things in this town, where the hell are we going? Because I'm sorry, it's a terrible, it's a terrible day when our councillors go to, go there. And at the end of the day, they are, you know, they 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 vote just to take away our sixth form.
Thanks, Phil. It's 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 not your news report, so I think without him here.
It's the agenda, it's on the agenda, I'm asking it under the agenda, not my fault that somebody isn't here. But equally, if somebody could write a letter like that, and I didn't get a copy, I don't know how many more didn't get a copy. But as I said, and if we can send a letter like that, I'd like to report off the same councillor next, next month. To ask him exactly why he he chose to vote against Welshpool.
Okay, well, we 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 can put that to him when when he's here and when it's a. An item on the agenda to be.
The people who need to know, because I am, I had the county councillor come and tell me it.
Do I, can I, with fair, we don't know that he has done.
Well, well, no, right, so. Uh, anyway, are there any other questions? Are there any other questions on the uh, the couns- county councillors' report? Okay. Thanks, thanks, or we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, which is um, these minutes of full council, uh. I think everybody was there. Um, you've seen the minutes which are at appendix B.
Hmm.
Um, all we're required to do here is to prove them as a correct record, so is there a proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the second, okay, can we have a vote on that, please, in favour? Uh, proposed by Alison, seconded by Bill. Uh, okay, uh, any against? Abstentions? Two abstentions. Thanks very much. Um, and the same with events and planning, which of course has delegated, is the only committee delegating powers, so again, we're looking. Uh, merely, I think, at whether or not those are correct.
No, and you're just noting what they meant.
Yes, yeah, so.
You've missed out on matters arising, Chair.
Oh.
It wasn't any.
Oh, right, well, that's just as well.
Everything, everything was done.
Okay, uh, so events and planning, um, the chair is Chris Davis, Chris isn't here, but.
I can do it.
Okay, Sally.
Suppose we accept, or do you want me to go through them?
Don't need you to go through them.
Um, they're just the notes.
Yeah, suppose we accept them, Chair?
Okay, a second, thank you, Maureen. Um, are those in favour of that?
Thank you.
Thank you, abstentions? You, you abstained, yeah, okay, thank you. Right. Uh. Operations and Development Committee. Uh. Phil, do you want to take us through that?
Uh, well, I could just try those are the recommendations, Chair Chairman, but the the important part. The the biggest debate, if you like, was about Alford.
Yeah.
And Alford is the one estate that is bigger, uh, and has more children than any other estate in the town. It's the one estate that we haven't supplied a. Uh, 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 player, you do. Um, so it was agreed and it's recommended to support the Alford Community Association with a campaign to restore playgrounds of the Alford estate. And instruct the town clerk to arrange a meeting and invite Paris County Council to it, Alan, Welsh Town Council and Alford Community Association to discuss further.
Yeah.
To this end, Chairman, we, uh, the town clerk and myself had a meeting with Floyd Allen last week.
Yes.
I don't know whether the town clerk would just address the committee on what went on there.
Okay, so, so, um, this is just an initial meeting, um, and then hopefully Cathy will will support the recognition of the committee this evening, and then we'll we'll get a certain more fall. But, um, it was, it was good to get the background from them about how this started. And why the playground was removed and removed over time, et cetera. Um, and they were meeting with their regional director next Tuesday to put it to them. Um, they potentially think that they might have an obligation to provide play facilities under agreements that, from Paris to Floyd Allen, et cetera. Um, so it was a, it was a positive first introductory meeting, and we'll see what happens. Uh, I think that's a fair reflection, isn't it, it should have.
Certainly quite positive, actually.
Yeah, it was possible.
Uh, it's just, it's really, uh, uh. An attempt to get everybody sort of around the table who could be involved to achieve something that could have been done ten years ago.
Yeah, I agree with you absolutely. Richard, I did have a discussion afterwards and I I certainly got the impression that it was a good first meeting anyway. Um, so we'll see where it goes from from here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? Uh, under the general update from the operations manager, it says playgrounds, new benches have been installed at Myser Dre. Now, there were, I believe, eleven benches waiting to be installed.
Hmm.
And I'd like to know how many, whether, um, we may not have that now, but can we have a report on how many benches? Have actually been installed and how many are still wait, awaiting installation? Because some of them have been waiting several years now.
Yeah, okay, well, sure, we can do that.
Yeah, it's on, it's on. It's to do with the pads.
Yes.
Um, so the pads need concrete, concreteing, and of course we were limited on the whether we could concrete them, so the pads in Myser Dre were done. And also we didn't want to take my straight-up action during the school holidays that had gone on. Um, and also benches have been installed at the country park, haven't they? So, and recently, so there's two new ones there. The accessible bench at Myser Dre and the new um, single bench, which is going to have the mental health talking plaques on them, as they proposed last year. And then I think the next one, from memory, is going to be Vicarage Gardens, I think, table back there, because it's a lovely space and someone will sit, but. I found myself sitting on the train statue, all of my lunches, I'm not on the bench. Um, but so I think that's, but I will, I will certainly get a written report for the next committee of reviews.
It, I, just that I'm very aware that these things, they need to be out in the public domain so that people can sit on them, not stuck in storage for years, I need to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, have we approved the minutes of operations and developments? Did we not get to that?
No, if you could.
Okay, so is there a proposal to accept those uh, those minutes?
Good work, uh.
Yeah.
Before I was interrupted, Chairman, I was going to identify that there were two more recommendations as well, right? Uh, so, uh, item eleven, the review cleaning contract, that's a standard, it's, uh, you know, the town parks needed with that to build October and whatever.
Yeah.
Item eight-three, the solar and battery installation, it's recommended by the committee to accept the quotation, as is special, special out there. But that works.
Thank you, Phil.
Uh, I think it was all the committee, all the comments.
I'm keen to support the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Is there a sender? Lots, okay, the, the.
Yeah.
Uh, and those in favour, please? Thanks, Drew, you abstaining?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm favourite.
Yeah, good, thanks. Uh, item two, finance and governance committee, July twenty-five, Laura, actually, would you take us through that?
Thank you, Chair. Do you want to confirm the minutes or do the recommendations first?
Uh, the council no longer approves the minutes. The committees have delegated, have to approve their own minutes, it's to, the council has to approve the recommendations that you made, so it's just the recommendations.
Okay, so five point three, um, councillor Bill Rowell was, um, it's recommended, the councillor Bill Rowell is that. Is appointed to perform scrutiny of payments exercised for August. Um, and at the next meeting, we will do a forward plan of some more councillors to scrutinise. Um, so we're more compliant with audit requirements.
Yep.
Item six point two, it's recommended to approve and adopt the Gibson hospitality policy. Um, William Endland, that was suggested to make it clear that the policy applies to cancers and that, or where, I suppose. And item six point three was the vehicle tracking policy, and it was recommended to approve and adopt the vehicle tracking policy. Item five point four, summer recess, which we're about to go into. Um, it was recommended that we authorize a town clerk to pay urgent and or contractual payments during August. And then that will get reported to the um, next finance committee in um, September. Item seven point two, council branding and style guide, it was recommended to approve the council branding and style guide. Which, um, and just for clarity, there were no major changes to it. There were some additions for different things we were doing. But it was a similar style guide to um, the existing one, so people wouldn't have to change very much. And item seven point three, newsletter and physical community. And item seven point three, newsletter and physical communications, it was recommended to approve and principal that two newsletters be produced annually, one for the summer and one for the winter, and obviously done at appropriate times. Um, our officers investigate all delivery, delivery and distribution methods prior to the design work commencing. To make sure that we can get it delivered to the right people at the right time. Item six point four, policy updates, um, it was recommended to give delegated approval to officers to update approved policies to replace references to previous committees with the new approved structure. And item eleven, the staffing review, um, which the town clerk is proposing goes externally. But you recommend it to use local council with subtlety for the extended staffing review at a cost of two thousand seven hundred and thirty pounds subject. To the town clerk being satisfied with the information that will be provided to them at the end. Um, and the cost of that is covered within the savings currently being made within the staff instructor. And item twelve, staffing recruitment of administrator on a temporary basis for two, so two days a week, as it written. Um, it was recommended that council appoint a shortlisting and interview panel comprising a council, councillor, cell belt, Levius, councillor, and the mayor, and the town clerk. And to give delegated powers to the town clerk to appoint position following agreement under pound.
Thank you, Morag. Um, is anybody got any comments or observations? Sally, you got your hand up.
Yeah, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Just a quick couple of, um, notes from me. Um, scrutiny of payments, what's that to involve, please? And why, why is it only Bill, bless him?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sally, yeah, um, it's proposed that, um, once a month, a councillor goes into the office, picks three payments at random, and then audit, audits them against the invoice. Under our managing standing orders, um, it is a requirement, but it hasn't been done.
Right.
Every invoice, just a random sample, so nobody knows which ones they're going to pick.
And it won't be delivery time, yeah.
Okay.
And councillor, here to do the first audit during August. And followed that will then have a, it can be any, any cancer, it was owned, if you would like to do it one month, that's fine, we'll, you know.
It was just a quick question on why, what that was happening, and again, item eleven, please. Why are we paying more people when we've got One Voice Wales?
Because, um, the quote from One Voice Wales was higher.
For less.
Yeah, it was the higher quote, but also didn't contain some of the elements that we thought should be in the quote. So, for example, they didn't intend to interview any staff while they were doing this review. And the committee found that decided that they thought that was an important part of the review. Um, so they were considerably cheaper, um, and the content of their review to us seemed more appropriate to what we wanted than the One Voice Wales.
Okay.
Hmm, okay. No, not really, but that's fine.
Would like some clarification, please. Uh, I'm not on the Finance and Governance Committee, but. Um, item six three, vehicle tracking policy, can you, like, is this actually?
Necessary.
Thing, sorry, something I'm talking.
Yeah, sorry, it's me, Nick, I just said, is it necessary?
I, I just wanted to clarify, is it actual vehicle tracking?
It is.
I was told this came about because of an RTI involving a meals on wheels vehicle.
Um, well, there were two, there were two, uh, separate, well, several episodes, and one involved, uh, uh, accidental conditions with the, the meals on wheels.
Yeah, but that's dash cam, that's not tracking.
Yes, but there was also the incident of, uh, we, we had a vehicle that was up in Liverpool or Manchester or something that, uh. Sorry. Edinburgh, it was in Edinburgh. Um, it, it's just, I mean, it's just part of knowing where our vehicles are for no other reason, for safety reasons, but, um.
The only reason this came about is because our insurers recommended it to us, they recommended tracking and or dash cams.
I just wanted to clarify.
I'm just going to clarify, Bill, this, this is from our insurers, not from me wanting to know where the staff are, I trust my staff, I know, I know where they are anyway. This, this came about because our insurance, and also the fact that it could actually lower our premiums, because if you have these things in place, then it could actually lower our premiums in future.
And if we're tracking our vehicles, it's also safer on with a security purpose.
Could I just ask, you mentioned, um, Edinburgh then, I wonder whether for members of the public, you could just clarify that our vehicle was not in Edinburgh?
It wasn't in Edinburgh, no, no, it was, it was, it was a camera that, that, that reads number plates that, that had a glitch and it wasn't our vehicle at all. Phil.
Yeah, it's important because it was our staff in this one as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because a dash cam, I mean, I got dash cams on both my cars, front and back.
Hmm.
And a dash cam gives evidence, if somebody, if somebody has an accident, anyone, oh, and it's not our employer's fault. But when it's one broken against the other, you know, we end up getting it all with false and everything else. Whereas if you've got dash cam evidence that it was somebody else's fault. Your insurance company will certainly fight, I'm, I'm sorry, so that it's the other person's fault and they pay.
Precisely, precisely right, and.
However, if the dash cam evidence actually proves that it was your fault, the police can demand your.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to.
I have to say, I have to say that in instances where you've basically got one person's word against the other and there's no, uh, evidence to prove it either way. Uh, the courts have a habit of, um, putting the blame on the ones that are insured and, and public bodies and councils tend to come off worse. So it's just as well as a habit. Anyway, uh, Morag.
Can I, can I just clarify as well? I know it says vehicle tracking system, but it's not active tracking. Somebody won't be sat there watching where the vehicles.
No.
Obviously, if an incident arises, then they can go back over data and know whether that vehicle was our vehicle or not, but it's not somebody, Richard certainly won't be there looking to see where the vehicles are.
Over time, it's going to stay.
And it's, it is currently current, common practice now, that anybody with a fleet of, of works vehicles. And some companies go as far as if they've got car people that lease vehicles, but that's not regular. It's only, it's only if they are company vehicles and you use them.
Thanks, Mor, councillor Ralph.
Uh, my memory of the meeting was that, uh, once you had, uh, suggested, as I believe you did, um, that dash cams be included in this, in fact, the, uh, the policy that we agreed potentially included dash cams as well as vehicle tracking.
Absolutely. Would I ask that we support the recommendation with the addition of what we included but isn't written in here about the dash cam as well as the tracking? It doesn't state that, should we state that if the advice of our town clerk is that we should?
I think the policy actually did mention it, didn't it?
I don't think it did.
You don't, okay.
It was discussed, so it shouldn't be in there.
Because I wasn't at the meeting, sorry, I thought the bit was missed, so.
Punted out to us in the meeting that it was in the policy.
Yeah. It, it was, because I think I made the point that it should be, and somebody said, well, actually, it's already in there, so. Uh, but if it isn't, if it, I mean, I'm pretty sure it is, but if it isn't, then, then I'm happy to support your recommendations, it should be.
I would second the, the recommendation that it becomes the vehicle tracking and that.
Yeah, okay then, uh, councillor France?
Yes, it seems quite simple to me that we have a responsibility to our, you know, taxpayers to, to reduce the amount that we pay for, for insurance, and, and this seems like something of a no brainer to me, so yeah, I, I'd be happy to support uh, the, the, the policy to propose it if no one else wants to.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just read out, it says, for the purposes of this policy, a tracking system includes GPS devices, telematics systems, and any vehicle mounted cameras that record data or footage.
Yeah, okay, so, so we don't need the amendment. So, um, unless there are any other questions on that, should we just go, go to a vote on whether to accept these recommendations as they stand? Uh, Phil's proposed, Lorach seconded, uh, those in favour, please? Sam?
Upstayed then.
Okay.
Upstayed in church.
Yeah, thanks, and Julie's abstaining, okay. Thank you, it's carried. Uh, moving on to, uh, item nine, finance, do you want to stay on that, Morag?
Yes, um, Chairman, um, she will have had to receive all the counts, including the graphic, those of you, Richard, that Richard has introduced. Um. So I propose that. Council, um, accept the accounts for June. Uh, after period three.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, those in favour, please? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Can I just mention, it's not part of the acceptance, but, um, as, as part of the meeting, we did discuss whether or not we needed the very details, every penny that went in and out and what it was. Um, and agreed that we didn't need all of that detail every single month. That maybe we could get that quarterly and, um, have the summary versions and rather get drowned in the detail.
Yeah, a, a, absolutely, I mean, there are some things where we do need the detail, but there's a lot of stuff where we're just being bombarded with stuff that we don't really need, not on a regular basis, so thanks, councillor Ralph.
Uh, but that, uh, those details will always be available for any councillor.
They're, they're, they're always available for scrutiny, we just don't need to have them for every, every meeting. Okay. Uh.
So proposed in second, we voted on it.
Yeah, it's nice, you, you proposed and asked.
Yes, it did, yeah.
Yeah, with one, one abstention, yeah, yeah, okay, so we're, we're on it now.
And heading invoices.
And one point two, it's recommended from Finance and Governance Committee to, um, uh, consider payment of the invoices for July as, as recommended the committee. I, I second the proposal from me.
Okay, thank you, Alison, uh, those in favour?
Hands up.
Thank you all very much, that's carried, I think we two.
I abstained on that, Phil.
Yeah, I gathered that. Thank you.
We actually accept the rest of our identity here, because we went right through them in the meeting. On our vote.
We have.
And, yeah, I think, I think, I think we just did.
We were, we were in full detail as well.
Uh, so, we're now on to electoral matters, um, town clerk's going to update us on, uh, uh, on that.
Well, I thought, I thought I'd have nothing to say, and then I had an email, uh, this evening at four thirty with the statement as two persons nominated for the election of the vacancy, they're trying to build a ward. Um, three candidates are standing, um, so the election is contested. And three candidates are with them, Meredith Kelly, Coral Jackson and Rich, uh, wife Richard John. Same name, first name.
Coral Jackson.
And so, uh, three candidates, and I do have a question for you though, that the parents have proposed to me, and they have asked. And if we want poll cards, now, they cost. They cost money, and I believe they cost ninety, a couple of them cost it, anyway, they cost money. Um, and it's a decision for you this evening, should we have poll cards or not, and they cost about, I don't know what you're saying. It was, it was a lot per hundred electors, and there is, uh, two thousand seven hundred electors in that ward. So it was potentially, because I know that we were already overspent on that budget. Um, it was, did you want to go ahead and also have poll cards for that election? Um, I've got, I've got it here, it's ninety five pound, there are a hundred electors. So there's two thousand seven hundred electors, um, so do the maths on that, I'm sure you can do the maths than I can. Um, it, it's a question, do we want them or not? Of course, if we don't, if we don't have poll cards, that you, you run the risk of a lesser turnout for that election.
Yeah, okay, I'm.
Foundation as Chair of Finance and Governance was to not have poll cards, but that's only my.
It's a difficult one, isn't it? It's, it's all to do with local democracy, as somebody said to me when I, I was asked how many were standing for the, by election, yeah, I'll just come to you in a second, Sam.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I said, well, at, at the moment, it's, it isn't contested, it wasn't at that point. And they said, well, it is now, because they knew somebody that was going to go to stand, I said, oh, that's, that's, that's good. Good for democracy, but not necessarily good for the council, it's now going to cost us money to have the election. And they said, well, you, you can't put a price on democracy, and I said, well, actually, you can, it's quite expensive. Anyway, sorry, that was a little, yeah, flippant, but, uh, yeah, go on, Sam, sorry.
I, I was just, just coming to say now, I know when I was elected in, um, I sat there mostly um, to greet people that were coming in and out and stuff, and they didn't bring poll cards with them. Um, the council actually just ticked their name off, so not everybody bought a poll card with them. So maybe try it this time and see how it goes. Um, it might, if, if it saves us money, then all well and good. But I think you need to advertise as the town council that this is coming up. Advertise it heavily, because we need decent people on this council. Um, and to see how we go without the poll cards, just see.
I think I tossed it up, it's going to be two thousand five hundred and sixty five pounds if we had whole cars. The only reason, but my question is to see, because you've had them in all the previous elections, I didn't want to be the one to say, let's not have them in this one, and if you want, whether podcasts were, you're right, people, it's, poll card is not a legal requirement to vote. It's basically a reminder to people that an election, you can come ahead, but instead, if we can do some advertising instead, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can, but.
Alison, never, then Julie.
I would like us to, and not, not at this moment, but to really think of ways that we can publicise that there is an election and its date way beyond social media, because of that two thousand seven hundred, there are a good number who don't use social media, I would suggest, so we need to, we need to be aware that there needs to be another way to inform people. Um, I think we can do that, but we need to think about it carefully and get it right, not just put something on.
No, I, I agree with you there, Alison, you're right, it does need to be widespread.
Thank you, Alison, clearly, uh, Julie.
Just a question, so when the public's going to go to vote and they've got no card?
Yeah.
Is it going to be for, how, how's that person going to prove it to that person?
You, you don't have to, so electoral law, you don't have to prove.
So, that, so basically, I could give Joe Bloggs my vote and they can go and vote for me.
You could also give me your card.
Yes, you could also give me your poll card, there's no way.
No.
That's why the government introduced a voter ID for general elections. No, there's no voter ID for these, yeah, there is for general, because they're non devolved, these are devolved elections, there's no voter ID requirement.
In, in theory, you would, you would be committing a criminal offence, you would be committing a serious criminal offence. Morag.
The, in my view, the most effective way of letting people know that there's election is by the candidates knocking on doors and telling them, because that's what I did, and the amount of people who didn't even know that there was an election, even though they'd had poll cards, was god smacking.
Right, okay, is there, is there a proposal to adopt?
I can.
So, sorry, uh, councillor France, and then I'll come to a vote.
Yes, I, I am minded here of the question. What is the cost of democracy? And an example I always use to answer that question is during the, the pandemic, when there was the, uh, the PPE scandal, and, and, and that was a, you know, lack of democracy, which, which cost many billions of pounds, obviously, nothing of that magnitude is likely to happen to our local town council. But, but, but I, I do think that, you know, obviously, we can't find money that we don't have. But if we're willing to, you know, make the sacrifice of letting electors know that there is an election, because obviously, there, there is a struggle for people to know that there is an election at the best of times, and if they don't get, if the poll cards don't even go out, then what hope is there? Um, if, if we're willing to make the sacrifice here, why, why, why wouldn't the county council? Why wouldn't Welsh government, why wouldn't the UK government, et cetera, et cetera? So, so I, I do feel like that, that there's a risk of setting something of a precedent. So I am minded to oppose the decision not to send out poll cards, i- if we're going to make cutbacks to save, uh, you know, people's plans here and there, I feel like it should be something else that's cut, rather than. make cutbacks to save, uh, you know, fifty thousand pounds here and there, I feel like it should be something else that's cut, rather than democracy.
Okay, thanks Dave. Well, I think the proposal is that we do send out poll cards, isn't it?
No.
Yes, not send that.
It's not, not send that, is it, Phil? And Phil, did you want to say, and then?
Well, I'm seconding more, I got on that, on the basis, chairman, this is a one-off election, a by-election.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it will give us the opportunity of judging the issue before the poll election in a couple of years' time.
Yes.
Uh, that really, uh, to make a, uh, a hell of a, be a hell of a decision for us at that time, and I think we need the, the, the feeling of our vote. But secondly, you know, we have to be aware that we are spending the money of the taxpayers in Welshful. Right? I'm sorry, you know, uh, it's so many times, as has already been said, I've been sitting outside there, and ninety percent of people don't bring a poll card. You just keep along and jam Joe Bloggs, you don't know.
Well, I don't, just, just to add a clarity, uh, when is the next full council elections? We won't need to pay for any poll cards, because it'll be the county council election at the same time, and they pay for sending the poll cards. It's, we, the cost gets to us when it's by-elections. And Welshful's had a fair number of by-elections in the last, since the last election in twenty twenty-two. And, and as you know, we've got an overspend of six thousand pound on the budget from two of those, so it's a decision for you to be.
Okay, so we have a proposal from Alison.
We've got a proposal from Morag, but I would like to amend that proposal by adding that um, we look into other ways of advertising it, so we endeavour to publicise this as much as we can.
Well, it's, uh, it's Morag's proposal, so he's happy to.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm quite happy, I second it more.
Okay, fine, so let's, can we have a, a, a vote in favour of that then, please?
One, two, three, four, five.
Sally's voting up there.
Oh, six, sorry, six, so.
Okay, against?
Against.
One, two.
Two against.
Okay, that's Carrie, thank you.
Don't.
Sorry?
I think Bill is abstaining.
Are you abstaining, Bill? Okay. Right, okay, thank you.
And if you do have any thoughts then on ways to promote, could you please send them to? Um, sorry, the other thing, the only thing on that item as well was, um, to consider holding a monthly event called.
One, come.
Come with a councillor, further along with the public.
Yeah, come with a council, um, councillor. And my only thought on this is the security issues. Um, whether, whether it would be with a group of people, whether it's just one-to-one, I think there are security issues.
Um, sorry, could I just backtrack to the point about the elections? Um, we have the County Times here this evening, and I wonder whether we could look at a, an editorial in the paper. And I also wonder whether we look at the cost of advertising in the paper, because the paper, both the County Times and the Shropshire Star hit a different, uh, demographic to those that look online.
Yeah.
Who can follow us up with?
Thank you.
And Chris is my status, join us.
Oh, hi, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hi. Does anybody want to, uh, have anything to say about the proposal, that we have these meetings with councillors? Right?
I think it's a good idea. But security is one thing, and I wouldn't recommend one-on-one, but obviously having somebody else in attendance. Uh, I'd be quite happy to do it.
I think the idea was, um, uh, we just came in the office, that maybe a, a group of councillors on a, on a rotor basis, we could sit somewhere at Corn Exchange and just for, you know, whatever duration.
Yeah, we do.
Whatever, I know you're going, whatever duration you wanted to allow the public to come and have a cup of tea and chat to you about issues in the town. Um, it's just about, to making ourselves more aware, we'd have to get it on a rotor basis, but initially, what are people's thoughts about dates, days and times? Like, would, do you want to do something on that Saturday morning? Would you want to do something in the evening? I, you know, what was people's initial thoughts?
Well, I see, th- th- firstly, I'd, I'd, I'd want a proposal that councillors were happy to do that, and then I'd look at considering whether, you know, when, when and how often it, it should be done. Does, does any, does anybody want to make a proposal?
I'll, I'll go as I can, but I'll add to it and say, we should come here from Sally first.
Okay, yeah, I can see you, Sam.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm in fully support of this, I actually tried to get this back when I came into the council, because I think it's important. Um, I think it's important that councillors are in the town, and we're available to be spoken to about issues, et cetera, because a lot of us at the moment aren't available for the public. I mean, I work very publicly domain, so I get to hear an awful lot, as you know. But fully support it, happily to go along with it. If I could say one thing, Mondays are a better day for me, because I work on a Saturday too, but happy to do what everybody comes up with, I can always take an hour off work to come and help, so, but yeah, fully support it, I think it's a really good idea. And a good town initiative too, so yeah, let's go for it.
Well, I've just got a feeling, chairman, that we could combine this sort of thing with the hub that is near, so, so successfully. Um, and, you know, we could use the, the, the judges' retirement room or whatever at the same time.
Like the sort of drop-in centre?
Well, it'd be different, I mean, I've, I've picked loads of people over the last three years, come up to me and say, can I have a word?
Yes.
And I'll say, yeah, let's go in the judges' retirement room.
I can see the round, and then Alison.
I, I think the simple fact of the matter is, we need to, um, uh, i- improve and increase the occasions on which this can happen, um. Uh, the hub is certainly one place where this ought to be happening, but there may be, there may be a need for, to set something up alongside that as well.
Okay, Alison?
I have a a hesitation about this, because when I first came onto the council, this was done. And, um, what happened was a group of councillors sat in the Corn Exchange, and it was really quiet, and then one person would come in occasionally, not every time, and there's like four councillors there to see them. And it was just, uh, to me, it didn't, it didn't achieve what we wanted it to achieve. I, and I question whether it was what the public wanted. I absolutely support the idea of us being available. Um, I think the hub is ideal, you know, Nick and Morag are there.
I'm both.
And, pardon?
I'm there.
And, oh, Bill, yes, sorry, you know, you're there regularly, you're talking to people regularly. Um, when I go in on Tuesdays, I'm not really available from there, but I'm in other parts of the town doing things. But I think for those people that want to do it, and think it's worthwhile, I think that's great. Uh, it, my hesitation is that if I've got something personal I wanted to discuss with a councillor, and go in and find four councillors round a table, I'm not convinced that I would be, uh, keen on opening my heart to you. I think we just need to think about it carefully, okay?
Sam, do you want to come back on something, or can I go to a vote on this?
Oh.
Okay, I'm a question too. Okay, Chris, okay, and did you see who was first?
Chris is waving.
Chris, I think you're waving, Chris, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, um, uh, I, I don't usually do this, but I've got to agree with, uh, with Alison. Uh, we, we had, when Robert was here, we had, um, a meeting in the old office in the evening on a, a Tuesday or a Thursday. And for months, I didn't see a single person coming in from the, the public. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I, I suppose, yeah, we have to consider that it is a, a commitment for councillors who are involved, uh, and it's going to take quite a lot of time. If it's not, um, well-used, um, it, it is you know, a bit much to have them sitting somewhere when there's no one coming in, sorry, Nick.
You're the first person.
I, I just want to say, I, what Alison says is true, because I'd be in the know, but if it was at the Hall, that's a different matter, I, I think it's word of mouth, and I think, yeah, it would work well if it was in the Hall.
Okay, that's true.
Definitely.
Do you want to just sign the principle?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if, if we, if we go ahead with it, it's an awful lot of things we'd have to iron out, but I think if we can just agree whether or not we think it's a good thing.
Yeah, I just say, as well as the hub, I I do it off, off my old bat, I mean, you've seen me, I sit on the bench, it's like banking hub, if I've got an hour to kill.
Yeah.
And I call it my surgery.
And everybody talks to you, I know.
Come up and people sit down at the bench next to me, and we have a little chat about problems, and, and that's what it's about.
Yes.
This is Dave and Sally with that.
Okay, um, councillor France.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I feel like perhaps some sort of rotor system might, might be useful, considering the, the problems that we've had previously. Maybe if you send, yes, maybe two councillors at a time to somewhere where there is pre-existing footfall, like the hubway, they already have like, you know, those county council and advice service, uh, representatives there, so people are used to going there with, with issues and, and problems, and I, maybe that would fix, uh, previous.
Let's say, Sally.
Um, just want to say, if, if, if you wanted to use the salon at any point, then you're more than welcome to do this too. If you wanted like a separate thing from, from the town halls, the, the, the council offices, then you can use the salon at, at this point, but I really do think it's a good idea, so yeah, I vote for.
Okay, thank you.
That was your vision for today.
I didn't think I had, Phil.
Can I ever say, yeah, yeah, you are, right?
Don't then.
But can I just say this, after we, this building, I would suggest to have, I think it would be a good, good exercise.
Mm-hmm.
But in this building, would, I mean, what, what do you do if you put notices out that say, if you want a personal interview appointment with any particular councillor this year, then just say so, and oh, we'll use Chamber for private interviews, or we'll use the, uh, the judges' turn, one or the other. We've got rooms here, it, they just need organising and, and putting in place.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, that would be me. Some people are happy to come and have a natter about Go Welshful and, and talk to three or four councillors. Other people want a private appointment about something, but so be it, we can afford to do it, and we have the rooms to, to, to afford it.
Indeed. I mean, I think councillors have different ways of working, and those that want to consult the councillors have different ways of doing it. But let, let, we, we, we sort of have a proposal that, that, that we arrange these meetings at, at least to two councillors um, at a, 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 a pre-appointed place of safety. Um, and that they be arranged on a regular basis to be decided in the future. I think that's the gist of what is being proposed.
Yeah.
So if we, if we just take a vote initially, just to see whether that meets with, you know.
Chairman, I have two different views on that, I don't like the two. Uh, I like.
I know.
I think that we should have a minimum of a spring, right?
Well, we, we, if we, if we say then the proposal is a, a, a minimum of two, but to, as with the regularity of the meetings, the number and the venue is to be decided in the future, just to get general consensus on whether we think it's a, a good idea in principle, I think that's what we're voting on. So if you do, if you're in favour of that, please show.
I'll second that.
And up.
Okay.
So.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, and, uh, I'm abstaining.
Why are you abstaining, Phil?
Yeah.
Because I'm allowed to.
I know you're allowed to, it's just why you're abstaining.
Well, I, I, I just, I'm not, I, I'm all for councillors, uh, being available and, and having discussions with people that want to talk to them. I'm not sure that this would work terribly well, that's all, that was the only reason. I don't want to say no, but I'm, I'm not particularly thinking it would be brilliant, but tha- that was the only reason, see.
Leaving it as you're saying, chairman, because we'll always be able to sit in there and tell the constituents, well, blame the mayor, continue.
People usually do, so what's new? Okay, let's move on. Um. Outside buddies, uh, right away volunteer programme, I'm, I wasn't able to go on this, but Bill, I think you did, so do you want to report?
Yeah. First, a meeting, uh, uh, to look at footpaths, et cetera, and their maintenance, and it was on the whole a very useful meeting. Footpath team are holding meetings in each cluster of the county with local councillors, and then separately meeting with volunteer groups. Attendance, I have to say, was not great, but there were representatives there from Casacranian, Carrigover, Caddasimio, and Fandrinio with Alcleen. Um, footpath team has always been very dependent on volunteer help. It isn't a matter of suddenly coming up with volunteers, they've always used volunteers. Over the years, they have built a party of some two hundred volunteers across the county, of whom thirty-seven are active within this area. Um, uh, two of them were actually at the meeting because they're also local councillors. Um, in the past, there has been a, a budget that could be used, but now that budget does not exist, has not existed for quite a long time. Uh, the team, however, has been quite effective at obtaining grant support for improvement works, as have other groups like Welshful Ramblers. Um, however, since Covid, there hasn't been a planned strategic approach to footpath care, and to some extent, what's happened has depended on where volunteers actually are, and quotes, who shouts loudest? So the aim is to be more strategic. The aim is to identify promoted routes in each area, which can be priorities for care, maintenance and improvements. Many of these will be circular routes, or there'll be, um, routes connecting together places with good access and or transport links. So that the, the sort of things that people will want to walk. The aim is to work within the Strategic Powers Initiative, so, uh, volunteers where possible are working not just on their own patch, but wherever they may be needed within the cluster as a whole. Councils can help identify promoted routes, uh, Montgomery has already done this very effectively, uh, as well as areas where improvement is an urgent priority. Uh, councils may also be a first contact with landowners, especially where the relationship is already good, it's just a matter of needing to, um, put things together. But a, a number of problems or possible problems were identified. Volunteers will not always be prepared or able to work beyond their own community, and you can't compel them to, obviously, because they're volunteers. Uh, volunteers may not be prepared or able to take on additional responsibilities for planning and or management, and it is seen as a, a matter of developing something that is to some degree self-managing. Um, who is going to actually deal with those landowners who are not prepared to be helpful? For example, where you've got a good and potentially popular route, where that route is put at risk by one significant component being blocked or left in poor repair because um, a landowner is opposed to its use. Well, volunteers from elsewhere in our cluster have worked recently, uh, with Welshful Ramblers to install gates, et cetera, in this area, so it does show that this, these things can happen. Uh, Ramblers, um, have made a successful bid for funding, and quite a lot of local styles have been replaced by gates. Uh, uh, the aim is to provide training, uh, for all volunteers, and training in particular areas such as, um, management of a, a volunteer team. Um, so at present, uh, this is a listening exercise, uh, but the aim is to add to and update the list of promoted paths, that's a priority going forward. And to establish a positive relationship between volunteer groups and town and community councils, and indeed on footpath issues between town and community councils, because footpaths do not stay within the boundaries of one particular council. Um, and the aim is to keep volunteers used and active, because otherwise they get fed up and they wander off and do some other area volunteering instead, and we lose them. Uh, and the aim is to ensure better support and coordination across the whole county, to recruit more help, and to reduce inequality of provision and maintenance across the county. Uh, so that's basically, uh, where we were. We also, um, did some, uh, actual mapping work. We had a, a big map spread out in front of us, and we were able to discuss where we thought uh, foot, footpath loops that were worth promoting might be. Uh, for example, uh, the people from Casabranium are very keen to, uh, promote the path that goes from here um, to Casabranium, uh, to the left of the, uh, of the Raven and then on. Actually, the first part of that path has been well, um, improved, but then beyond a certain distance, it's sort of very hard to be. But then beyond a certain distance, it's sort of very hard to even find. So there is work to be done.
Okay.
Um, and, um, there'll be further meetings and the opportunity for, uh, local councils to pay uh, uh, to, to play a bigger part i- i- in this.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. And my concern, which I, I think I voiced when it was first raised here, was some diminishing in the involvement of the county council, who are the footpaths and by the ways authority, um, and trying to put the burden on to uh, uh, community councils like ours that, that don't have the means to do the work that they should be doing. So they should be using all their statutory power. I mean, were you satisfied that this isn't a, an exercise by stealth or more?
No, this is not an exercise by stealth because, uh, um, even before Covid and certainly since Covid, uh, there's been no budget. They're, they're, they're not reducing further what they, what they are and what they have and what they do, but they are aware that they have not been providing an equal service across the county. Those local councils or local groups of volunteers that are keen have been getting on with stuff.
Yeah.
Other areas have been untouched and that's, that's not really what they want.
Okay, so are you going to be meeting again?
Uh, I'm, I'm very happy to remain, um, involved in, in this, yeah.
And you will report back on any developments? I don't think there's really anything for us to, uh, devote on, but it was interesting to, to hear what was discussed. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill, for taking the time to address.
Yeah, since, since then, I've been walking a few footpaths I've not walked before and taking pictures of broken style. So I will be, I, I will be putting some pressure on for that case as well.
Thanks. Um, OBW Innovative Practice Conference and Alison, you think you can respond to us on that?
Well, it was, it was very interesting. Richard and I went and please. Pippi, because she'll remember a lot more than I did. Um, uh, the, uh, we had a good presentation, um, from Jane Bryant, the Cabinet, the Cabinet Secretary for Housing and Local Government. Um, unfortunately, it was, um, recorded and, um, online. But we did have, at the same time, we did have the officer, Matthew Wellington, Deputy Director for Local Government Policy in the room with us. Um, so there was a useful presentation and we were then in a position to be able to put some very strong points to him, which I think we did quite successfully. Do you?
Yes.
Richard?
Yeah.
Um, uh, there were very strong points, um, that were supported by other councils um, regarding, um, uh, the training, um, democratic deficit. Um, and also, uh, the stress under which, um, uh, town parks are uh, put in many cases. So it was, that was very useful. Um, we then had, um, Diane Bevan, who continued in the same uh, vein really. She is a member of the Democracy and Boundary Commission um, for Wales. And she was, uh, addressing the issues relating to the democratic health again. Um, particularly in the local council sector. Um, and then, um, another thing that we looked at, um, clustering, um, at the value of clustering, noting the, um, the need for and interest in asset transfer from higher levels of government and the growing demands on local councils. And also, um, we had a presentation from, uh, the, uh, Clinical Out-of-Hospital Cardiac Arrest Programme Manager about Save a Life Comry. And one of the things which I've I meant to say when I came back and I've forgotten to say, so I'm saying now, is we were shown a photograph of the defibrillator box. And what you should not do is have the first aid kit in with it and it's in ours. It must not be in there. There was also, um, very clear direction on how this needs to be managed. You will recall there was a time when our defib went missing and it took Paul several phone calls and a tracking down to discover it was round at the health centre. The, um, medical centre and hadn't been returned. So there were various things we were advised on with this. And, um, so that was all, I think, very useful and we are getting notes from that. Um, then, um, we had a very interesting, I thought, talk from Paul Fennell from, um, Paris County Council, Captry Palace County Council on, uh, he's the Digital Development Manager and he talked about AI and the benefits to local councils. Um, I then went into that workshop later on. Richard went into a different workshop shop. About that. We also had, um, a discussion about, uh, community asset transfers. And as I said, we then went into these workshops when we were able to look at various things. So I was in the one on AI, which of one of the particularly interesting things is the fact that, that we can, we can use AI to, uh, take the minutes of meetings. If you use AI, one of the standard systems, you know, like Google or one of the others, um, then, uh, what we don't know, although we can find out, is where that information is then stored. Um, the advantage of doing it through Paris County Council is that it meets GDPR. So there were several things that we were talking about and that, uh, he is keen to work with local councils as well. They're already using it, which I'm sure Julie knows within social services, so that they are doing, able to do interviews with people by just having their phone there and it records it and writes up the minutes, writes up the notes of that straight away. They're piloting that at the moment within Paris and it obviously is saving time. It's stop, preventing the staff spending as much time doing those sort of tasks, which mean they can do something much more useful for their clients.
Hmm, thank you, Alison. Of course, it, it, it adds in another level of data processing and data storage, which we would then have to, um, observe the, the rules of.
Through Paris County Council system, so it's all stored in the UK under GDPR.
I think it's, it's secure storage.
Yes.
We, we would still be the processors.
From what he's, from what he said, I'm sure Richard can tell you a bit more about.
Yes, okay.
What have I missed out, Richard?
Uh, shall I come to?
Yes.
That, uh, councillor Fitzgerald.
Um, just a quick one. Alison, they're not actually first aid kits, darling. They're the bleed kits that we've got grants for. That is actually in the defib case of stabbings. So it's not actually a full first aid kit. I just wanted to alliterate that. It's a bleed kit. Just in case somebody gets stabbed, that's why they're in the defibs. Remember, we got them from the grant last year from Deb actually sourced them for us. And we decided to put them in with the defibs because they thought it'd be on the streets easier to get hold of. So that's why there is those bleed kits in with the defibs.
Nice. I think, I think Save Life Coming were making the points because the defibs get unlocked when you ring, they give you the code.
But it's the bleed, it's the bleed kits, not an actual first aid kit.
Bleed kits are on the circuit database, so the ambulance providers can't direct people to where the bleed kits are. So they were saying you should you should put it in a separate box next to the defibs.
Right, okay.
That's my, actually, it was, it was good actually because we came back, I came back with lots of questions about, um, because each defibrillator needs a competent person or responsible person, because that person gets emailed when it gets used. And then, you know, checks up your defib where it's gone. And actually, we haven't got any people down on our list as defib managers. So we, we've done those now and and then, and then to the circuit. So that was a good exercise. And the only other thing I had is the workshop I went to was on, um, community boundary reviews, citing, um, no, basically, um, a prowess has a statutory duty every so often to review its community communities and the boundaries for them and numbers of councillors on their community councils, et cetera. Uh, Cowis lasted their review in two thousand and six and hasn't done one since. Um, so new legislation has passed, um, last year, which push that on again to be within the next ten years. I've been told anecdotally they're going to do it after the next elections, after twenty twenty seven, but by that point then, um, these boundaries will have been here for twenty years, um, which isn't great and the issue of doing it more, more frequently. But basically, the conversation was around, um, County District and Montgomery were very similar process and are basically going from seventy to thirty, which means that they're cutting hundreds and hundreds of councillors across their things. And the conversation was more about um, how two P works, so staff transferring to another council, et cetera, when the councils get dissolved. And what happens to the councillors, where the assets wind up, all of that stuff. But I hope you haven't got worried about anything too yet. But, um, it is happening elsewhere in Wales.
Oh, well. Okay. Thank, thank you, Alison. Thank you, Rich. That was interesting. Thanks. Um, has anybody been on any outside bodies that they want to report on in the last month?
It's the One Voice Wales area meeting.
Oh, good.
Um.
Oh, I didn't get a minute. I didn't, I didn't even get the agenda. Just believe I usually don't.
Um, well, it was, it was held in Llaba Llin and they put on a great spread of food for us. I should tell you that nowhere else in Wales do the One Voice Wales area meetings have food, but everyone in Monca, North Montgomery, in North Poweris does, Montgomery, she does. Um, it, uh, we had, the, the speaker was Richard Church, who came and talked about his role within the cabinet, his areas of responsibility. Um, there were lots of questions. People were very interested to understand how the cabinet worked. Um, and, um, we reported back on various other aspects. Um, that's it really. It's not a lot to say. It was a useful and interesting meeting which they enjoyed. There are only so many face-to-face meetings and so many, um, uh, online, so that we're not all travelling around in winter.
Yeah. Thank you, Alison. All right, um, item twelve, uh, these are the motions for debates that, uh, individual councillors have requested. Um, first of all, we have councillor Julie Arnold's, um, motion on recycling.
I, I've, um, I just want to explain why it has taken so long for anything to be happening. Um, so it's two months, um, two weeks after I asked Carol, um, was there any date? And the answer was no, not at the moment. So then I seen Richard approximately about five weeks later because members of the public was asking me, you know, why is this meeting happening? Um, so I asked Richard to put this back on the agenda because I was very, I am going to say it, I'm very disappointed with our county councillors.
Yeah.
I said, should last week? And I said, can you tell me what's happening regarding the meeting? And I'll be honest, it was, Richard didn't realise or he'd forgotten. So this is why things are happening now. I've give Richard, um, when I'm available. Um, so I'm putting it to you councillors now. Do you want me to have this meeting with House County Council, with Nick, or should we do a vote today?
It is, I mean, we do, no, isn't it? So, so basically, um, this came to you in the annual meeting, um, in May and council decided to, to defer it on the basis that Carol would set up a meeting with Julie and the portfolio holder. Um, and with our two months on, I don't think that meeting is, has happened or yet to take place. And I've seen there's some activity around that meeting now. So that's why it's back on the, on the agenda because council didn't actually formally vote on a view about the recycling centres. It did defer the motion that was discussed.
Okay, Bill?
Sure, I fully agree with the sentiments that, uh, it's fresh here. Um, only a week last Friday, uh, I wanted to go and take some hedge cuttings down to Porters. Uh, on the Friday afternoon, oh, I've got a bucket. But I ring at twenty five past four to, to get a booking. Didn't matter whether it was Friday afternoon or Saturday morning or whatever, you know, no problem. Sorry, the office is closed. You can't book in. Then on Saturday, the office is closed. On Sunday, the office is closed. On Monday and Tuesday, Porters are closed. So Welsh School have got four days where they can't do anything and only three days they can go there in effect. Right? It's a scandalous situation after what we had, which was a, a seven day, uh, service. And quite honestly, a lot of old people just can't get through. They get, I mean, you, you, you try the system and it goes from one to the other, to the other, to the other. Press one if you're this and press nine if you're that and it's a and a lot of the old people just can't, have to hold it.
Yeah, I know.
It, it really is not acceptable.
No, and they, they, they have had technical problems, which I gather they've overcome now, but it's still not easy for some people, I know, and, uh, um, I think Bill and then Julie and then, and then you, and then Chris.
So I, I, I use the system, uh, often and, um, and it works very well for those who are capable of using it, but, um, you know, it's manifestly unfair because there are a lot of people who cannot use that system who need to talk to someone on the phone, uh, and it's, it's hugely difficult. Um, I mean, it, it, I, I, I hope that the review that is due to take place will actually realise that actually for a lot of the week, you don't need to book in. It's not that busy.
No, you don't.
Uh, if you, if you, if you have a booking system that just takes care of the really busy times when it can be dangerous if there are too many vehicles there, then, um, life is so much easier for everyone else.
Yeah, I would agree. Julie?
I, I, it's, it's not for, I mean, the percentage of people in Welsh School do not have the internet because it's an older population. It's, it's also the cost of what they're charging to take things there. But in a financial crisis, people living in poverty, there is fly tipping going on. And I know for a fact that people are putting you know, stuff in their wheelie bins and we're supposed to be saving the planet. And then we've got the big issue, winter's coming, we've got these huge, you know, where we've got to go up the steps and the staff are not asking people, do they need support? Do they need help? There's no signs there saying you need any support. So that's a big issue as well.
To, to, to be fair to them, they do say that if you specify that you need assistance, they will make sure they provide it. And whether they do or not, I. Councillor Davis, Chris Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm totally behind Julie here. Uh, it's, it's become a non-service, I'm afraid. Uh, nonsense service, uh, no, no service. Um, I've also heard reports that they are charging people for for dropping certain things off. Who, who makes this, uh, who, who makes the decision of what to charge? Is it measured? Is it weighed? Is it, it, it's, it's becoming a, an absolute ridiculous, don't, don't even bother ringing up. And people's, people's opinions now are, uh, it's too much hassle, I'm afraid, to go and fly tipping is going to happen.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, there's, there's, there's a whole menu that explains what the charges are and what, what they probably are charged for. Um, but we have to remember, I mean, nobody, I don't think anybody knows this, but we have to remember that there was a proposal at one time that we lose it altogether. We might have to go into Newtown and they would combine them. So we the, the, the decision that will be taken, unfortunately, like every other decision that's taken affecting us and our community is going to be based on budgetary considerations of, of running these ways. Um, I suppose, I think. Uh, which we suppose.
Um, I think, uh, on a, personally, everything's worked for me. And I found it very easy. However, uh, and they've been very helpful. They've offered to help carry things. They've taken things up steps and all that has been great. However, um, I think the point is, is that, I said earlier about AI. For the people that, um, are having to phone, surely there can be AI on the end of it. So that you said, you know, what will you be coming in? A car, a van or whatever? Press one for van, whatever, however that works. There's ways that they could make it work on the phone twenty-four hours. I think the other thing is, is that, um, the, uh, the help. Uh, I mean, particularly the woman that works there is extremely helpful, but other staff are as well. There are difficulties with it. Um, I think one of the things now is that whereas we were able to use the large dumpy bags to take rubbish in because they now go up steps, you now aren't allowed to use the tonne dumpy bags. You have to have half-tonne ones. So there's that kind of thing, which is another change. Building materials. Building materials, any building materials, and the simple way it's explained is if you were selling your house and you were leaving, you wouldn't take the kitchen with you and your bathroom suite. You wouldn't unscrew things from the walls. Those things you pay for. The things that you are, other things you are taking. However, the other part of that is if you ask for things to be collected from your home, such as a sofa, they are very, very expensive. And I think if we want to prevent fly tipping, we need to address that. There are ways, I think, to make the system work for more people on the, on the understanding that not just Welshpool, but Powys as a whole, has an older population. And therefore we do need to do it. And we also know that there are parts of Powys where the internet is, you know, an occasional addition.
Thanks, Alison. Councillor Brown, then, if you want to come back on this, Julie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to be in any way being critical of the staff at Potter's for what they do. I think I found them, I found them helpful and constructive, as they always have been. But, you know, there are so many inconsistencies here. It's, it's very silly to have to book a slot on quiet days when there's not hardly anything about. That they, it's all very well to say, oh, this is building rubble and this isn't. But there is a big grey area and often people are challenged over things that, you know, really shouldn't be paid for. And I, I take the, I take the, the, the point that they're not, Powys are not making money from this, they're simply trying to defray some of their expenses, but it still feels as if they are. So how to make, and, you know, there are lots, there are lots of questions that really do need sorting out. We do need to, to, to make clear points on this, I think.
Thank you, Bill. Julie?
Did you want to speak?
No.
So my proposal is I, we give.
Sorry, sorry, there was one thing I was going to say. They're going to hold a review following their public consultation. I'd love to know what members of the public they're talking to, because I'm certainly not one of them.
Yeah, great.
The, the last full country meeting, I believe, the Welsh Conservatives were successful in their motion to ask the cabinet to review the system, I think at six months. So there is a review. And of course, if council did respond tonight, hopefully what council did respond would be taken into account into the review. So it's not just, not just responding for the sake of it, there is an opportunity actually to feed something back to them.
Sorry, Julie.
And so my way of thinking is doing a proposal now, give Powys two weeks to arrange a meeting. And if, if they don't arrange a meeting, because this is dragging on and I'm not happy, I don't like things dragging on. It's not, it's not, it's not for when I've got the public saying to me, what are you doing? And it's not me, it's the county councillors knocking things forward. And after two weeks, if not, then it goes to vote.
Okay. You want, you want them to come to us and, and?
We have the meeting arranged, what Richard said he arranged, but they've got two weeks to arrange a meeting. Because this is like ten weeks now, and me and Nick has a meeting with him or anyone else who wants to go.
My advice would just be just vote.
Sorry, can you?
My advice would just be, why, why don't you vote on it now? Because actually what we're doing is you're just, you're just.
Yeah, all right, yeah, yeah, okay, let's do it now.
It's your move.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll say it in detail.
Okay, right, we've got a proposal to second it for that. So are those in favour of please?
One, two, three, four, five.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Okay, the car parking charge is councillor Sally Fitzgerald.
Um, this is quite controversial. This has upset an awful lot of people. Obviously, it's, we talk about this every single day in the salon and in town as well. It's literally, it's going to kill town. Local businesspeople are really, really worried about these charges going up. There's not enough footfall in the town as it is. What else have I got here for it to be? Be detrimental to the towns. Residents would rather go somewhere else like Oswestry than Welshpool, because the car parking charge is there is a pound per hour. I really don't understand why Powys are doing this, because it's not good. It's like, take, just for an instance from me, like somebody comes to me from like Middletown or something for a haircut. They're only going to be an hour with me. That isn't even an option now. Oh, it is actually. Sorry, Rich, you've put that in now. It's one pound fifty. It used to be a pound. Why have they put this up so much? It's going to absolutely kill our little town. So I'd like what you guys think on it. But I know there's an awful lot of angry people over this and I don't think it's right. I really don't. So floor's yours. See what you think.
I've got a view on this. I mean, how in the name of all that is reasonable can, can Powys apply blanket car parking charges to an area the size of this, with diverse populations, different financial considerations, different transport infrastructures? We live in a sparse, sparsely populated area with a lot of rural inhabitants that have to move to town without adequate transport. Now, how are we the same as somebody down in Brecon that has all of that and more? And an entirely different economy to ours? They've just stuck it on every dashed car park in the county, because it's going to get them a bit more money. And it's, it's insane. That's my view.
Can I come back in? Can I come back in?
Now, go on.
Can I? Just another, another one that's been raised with me as well is say somebody works in the town and they have to drive into town. That's then going to cost them five pounds a day. Not everybody can pay out the charges that they want them for three months, nine months or whatever. Not everybody can afford to do that. So they pay by day. Well, you look at that, if they work five days a week, that's twenty-five pounds a week out of their wage. It's an awful lot of money. And I, I just think it just needs to be considered and it needs, we need to just shout out about this a little bit. So that's it. All from me now.
Thank you, Sal. I don't know who's next. Shall I go this way around?
Yeah.
Okay, Alison?
I think I agree. However, I think that one of the things that could be done is that I feel it would be reasonable for ratepayers to pay fifty percent of the annual quarterly whatever charge. I'm picking up Sally's point, why can't you buy your month, your weekly ticket on a direct debit, you know, that kind of thing? There are ways that they could do this. They are, I think, your point about the fact that it's a blanket over the whole county is wrong. However, I would say in the case of Oswestry, and I, Oswestry's great, but they have a Business Innovation District, and it is their bid that actually has paid for this through the town council. Yes. So it's because of that that they've been able to do it, whereas.
The beauty of Oswestry is the town council own the car parks and sets up fees, which remains the responsibility for the town. If we owned the car parks.
We used to own them before the government said they were going to take them over.
Yes. So the point is, is that, is that I think that we are talking, you know, about different things. But I think we really have to push for it. They are out for every flipping penny they can get for the car parks. They always have been. You know, we know it's the same when there's an event going on and it's frustrating. You look at the ten K event. And that last year it was a real problem, because they couldn't even get everybody to pay their money, because the machine was so slow. So it, it is having a really negative effect on our town, particularly not just on the people that are employed. But particularly as well, we have a lot of charity shops. Those charity shops have got volunteers working in there. So you volunteer for two days a week in there and it costs you your transport in and you have to pay to do that. And I think we've got to do something about it. It's not, it's not right. And as you say, it's very different in this town to other towns.
Thank you.
My heart bleeds frankly for Powys County Council, who are so much struggling to maintain their car parks, because we are assured by the portfolio holder that this is not a cash cow and that they need to charge this money in order to maintain the car parks. Well, if they really do need this money in order to maintain the car parks, and it's such a difficult thing for them to do, give us the, I mean, car park.
Well, as, as, as Councillor Richard said, there used to be ours, like everything else, the power seems to repay.
We buy it back for a quid.
Yes, it would be nice.
There is, there is, I think, a reasonable claim that they should still be ours, which we ought to pursue.
There, there, there is, yes, well, there is, there is the suggestion that, yeah, that we do have some claim. But anyway, Bill?
I agree with everything that's been said, but it is unfortunate that it happens tonight that we're here in Welshpool Town Hall. And all county councillors are not available.
No.
I would have liked to add this discussion when our county councillor is here. Can I ask if we make arrangements that follow our three county councillors will be in attendance at next month's council meeting? Because I'm sure it'll be interesting. And we'll ask the press specially to tell all the townspeople that they'll be here to answer questions. Let's just see what happens in this town, because everybody out there is praying hell about this.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they, the Labour and Lib Dem pact don't give a damn about the people in Montgomeryshire or in, or in Powys at all. They just don't give a damn.
Thank you, Bill.
Just one question. Am I right to say, or it used to be, that the money from the car parks used to fund the buses? Is that still the case now or not?
The buffet?
The buses, the busi.
Understanding that.
Buffet, don't talk buffet.
It's my understanding, they use the money gained.
Yeah.
So the way that Powys has set its budget, they set a net budget, because this forms part of their gross budget. So the budget they set is whatever's left over from the fees and charges they don't collect, which is the, the way that they do it. So, so every year they set council tax on the net budget. But the revenue support grant from Welsh Government pays around seventy percent, council tax pays around thirty percent of the net budget. The gross budget includes all the fees and charges that they charge, which include the car. So the more they put up the charges, the less the net budget is, because of course net budget is the deficit between the charges and the, and the not.
Nick?
But I, I just have to say that, I mean, nobody's mentioned yet that we've just had a hike in our council tax.
That's clear.
So we're paying for that anyway. And there's these little, these little stealth taxes coming in, like the recycling and the car parking and all that. And yet you've got people sitting in Landod on the cabinet on forty grand a year each.
Yeah.
At a part-time job, which I find pretty nauseating, to be honest.
Well, as I, as I said right at the beginning in my report, there's a problem with this county. It is just too big and unwieldy and we're stuck sort of in the middle and we, we seem to get very little. You may be interested to know that there was, there was a, a, a Welsh government minister here in Welshpool a few days ago, visiting what's happening down like that. We weren't even invited. They don't really want our view on what's happening. It seems that we are, we are in the irrelevance.
Legigre, legigreph.
Yes, that is it.
Dave?
Dave?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, obviously we'd all prefer the, the car parks to be free. And we, we all know that, you know, as, as we've had to make difficult decisions tonight around budgets, that money does have to come from somewhere. But, but I'd like to make the case that, well, as much as some people are more capable than others for, for paying for, you know, the price of public services. What, what's particularly me is that we, we now, or rather the county council is now asking disabled people to pay for parking, when obviously i- if, you know, someone like myself, who, who does, who can work, who does work, theoretically, I could work hard to go up in hours in, in order to pay that little bit extra. Whereas someone who's disabled and can't work, that, that's not an option for them and it just comes out of whatever other budget heading, like eating food. So, so I, I, I think that as much as, you know, money does have to come from somewhere, if it was the case of, well, we've got to make, make this money up, don't make it up off the backs of the disabled people. That, that's what I feel very strongly about.
Great with you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Chris, Councillor Chris Davies?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Really, really feel for little businesses. Sally Bottomchippy has been going on for it for, for many, many years. The car park stops people, prevents people coming into the town. The last I heard roughly about this is that they may even be going up, because there's, there's some sort of tourist charge, like you'd have if we go abroad, you, you have a one-off payment to pay the hotels and whatever. And a tourist tax charge or whatever it is. And I think they're talking about it pushing up again.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Chris. Yeah. Okay, and Bill? And then should we have some sort of proposal after Bill?
Yeah, I, I, I just feel, I want to underline this point about the sheer size of Powys. And the fact that, that here and in other towns, and we need to make common cause with other towns, I think, on this issue if we can. You know, land which was originally gifted to the local community is now administered centrally from, from Landod and it is, it's not fair, it's not right.
The gift to the old Welshpool Corporation from the church of the land, from the Vicarage Gardens down to the canal, which includes the car park, where you mentioned, was gifted to the mayor, burgesses, I think, and, and people of the people of Welshpool, not to Powys County Council. And for them to put a car park there and spend the money down in wherever. I mean, sorry to keep banging on about it, but it's just, it's simply.
Wasn't even given to Montgomeryshire?
No.
It was given to.
And all the way was quite, quite right there, just when she said they did it wrong. They should have had Montgomeryshire as one council and Brecon and Radnor as another.
I agree.
And it would have been a damn sight cheaper to run the counties like that.
I agree. Anyway, is there a proposal that?
So Sally's, Sally's motion is on the.
It is, yeah.
It says Marshall Town Council calls on Powys Town Council to cancel the increased charges and consider the impact on residents, workers and visitors, and instructs the town clerk to write to the appropriate cabinet and express the opinion.
Are we happy that motion has been proposed?
Perhaps amend it to make specific mention of the charging to do by shoulder as well.
Yeah, yes.
You having?
I see, Bill. Yeah, absolutely. I just want to raise as well, can you imagine the illegal parking as well if this goes up? It's just going to be a nightmare in town. So it's just, it's something that I think we need to shout quite loud about. So thank you for support on it. And yeah, let's, let's get things done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Proposal? And if you have a course, is it a proposal? Do you second it?
Yes.
Could I just add, but I think Sally's just said about the illegal parking. I think, you know, we look outside the Silverfish and other businesses, illegal parking there, along by the kebab shop. Now, if you could park in the car park without being charged, they would be able to park in the car park and the police will come down hard on all that really inconvenient illegal parking.
Yeah.
Coming up to traffic lights.
Well, yes, and the planners that have allowed all those premises all along the, the, the central to be converted into, into flats without any kind of adequate parking, you know, in, in the town. I don't know what they were thinking of, but anyway, we've got a, it's a proposal, it's being seconded. We have a vote on that, please. Those in favour?
Hands up.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much for your support, councillors.
Thank you, Sal.
I'll just make one additional point, which I think is an important one, because, you know, maybe you have to have a car park charges that are higher than we, than we like. But if we had control of car parks, then at, at the very least, at certain times of the year or certain days of the week, we could say there will be no charges.
Yeah.
You know, and we can't do that at the moment. And that's something that can hugely help local businesses.
We can, but we don't have to pay for it. And I had the fee from them to do that. Yes, it's two hundred and seventy-something plus twenty-five pounds a day for Church Street. Yeah, a day.
Something that we own.
Yes.
Okay, right, thank you. Move on. Um, okay. Uh, right, thank you. We, we move on. Uh, there's this post sixteen transformation. Um, to consider holding a public meeting in September, the residents to discuss the changes to the po- to post sixteen being proposed by Paris County Council.
I don't think, I think the same thing more. It follows on when we discussed last meeting, where Graham explained the changes. Um, Howard's actually did meet, um, here actually, with the governors in the local area um, about the effective changes. And it's nice to see them doing some initial consultation. Uh, the formal consultation started out in the autumn term, but basically this is on a generous evening, because of course, your next meeting is at the end of September. And I think the idea was strike while the land is hot, Kukauan have a meeting already. And, um, yeah, Welsh could do the same.
Yeah. Good, yeah. Okay, uh, those in favour, please?
Sorry, will you second?
Yep, hands up.
So.
Okay, that's unanimous.
You happy we just organised a date and direct convocate people?
Yes, absolutely. Is, has Julie left or is she?
The lady from.
Yeah, Nick is.
Okay, okay. Um, had we better wait for her to come back so we can record her vote, or are you happy to?
Well, it's passed anyway, isn't it?
Yes, passed, but yeah, okay, okay. Uh, the community fridge is item fourteen and you saw, uh, Richard Church's um kind offer in his report. Um, does anybody want to say anything about the community fridge?
I think Sally's leaving us, Chair, just to say.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I've got to go. All right, see you all soon. Thank you for your support tonight. Thank you. Do I just press the leave on this now? I'm not very savvy. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Credit where they can stand.
Appreciate it, sure.
Uh, yeah, councillor Davies, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, community fridge, I, I, I would be the biggest supporter of young family going hungry, especially children. Um, I'm just a little bit concerned with how we're going to um monitor this.
Yeah.
Whether we got, whether we contact the food bank, whether we contact, is there means testing? Um, I don't think we're all uh savvy enough to, to do all that, so a, a little bit concerned with who goes in there, who, who actually uses this.
Yeah, there, there, there are concerns, Chris. I mean, there are obvious things, practical things that have to be on that, but they, they have been kind of discussed. Do you want to just mention this, Alison?
A, a community fridge isn't like a food bank. A community fr- fridge is about food that would otherwise be going to waste. And members of the community can then have it. So they can come in and collect whatever's there. And uh, so this includes people who can't afford it, but includes everybody, just as the give and take does, and just as the hub does. And, um, it will, it gives the opportunity, one of the things that's done generally through a community fridge is that you're able to report regularly on how much food has been diverted from landfill as well. Um, as you're aware, the supermarkets and, and other, and other uh, food outlets throw food away because they have to. Uh, so when it comes to its sell-by date, it has to go. And so basically, we would be able to have it in there for people to have, and they would be able to have it free.
Yeah. Uh, councillor France, is your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, as councillor Davy suggests, food, uh, community fridges do generally follow the principle of universality, much like the NHS, for example, where obviously people who are more in need benefit from it more, but, but everyone can potentially benefit and, and the planet benefits as well. Uh, and so does food security. I, I have heard that, you know, there is a lot of food surplus in Welshpool and that there's just nowhere for it to go. So I was told that some food waste is even sent to, to Newtown, because they do actually have extensive uh food distribution networks, food waste distribution networks, i- in, in a way that we don't. Obviously, one community fridge is not going to be the, the make or break between uh, reduce, completely reducing all our food waste or not, but I, I do think it, it's something that the, the town is sorely lacking. And as much as, you know, maybe any one of us can't be the, the individual who holds the kind of weighty burden of, of running the, the fridge all on our own. I think if we collectively as, as, as a council, you know, put our flag in the ground and hold space, others will hopefully uh flock around. So I, I'm very much in favour of uh, thi- this proposal passing.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I mean, there, there would be things we would have to sort out, like maintaining it, how, how we prevent it from, you know, being vandalised and everything else. Um, but there, there's a proposal that we have in, in the town hall. I think it's a good idea. So should we, should we just vote on?
Chris Davies?
Uh, go on, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chair. Um, I'm adamant that this needs to be monitored, Chair. Uh, there, there will be unscrupulous people coming in there to fill their own fridge or, or help themselves. I'm not gonna say that there's a lot around, but this is what's gonna happen. And some, somehow, I, I can't see us running a food, uh, a community fridge without being hand in glove with the food banks.
Well, it's a, it's, it's, it's a different sort of thing, but I mean, you, you're, you're right. I mean, I think we would be naive to think that, 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 that there wouldn't be occasions when uh things would happen, but we can minimise the risk and there are things we can put in place to uh safeguard it as, as, as much as we're able to. But it's an occupational hazard of these sort of things. From time to time, uh, it will be misused.
Thank you, Chair.
Chris, um, Bill?
Yeah, Chair, you know, I agree with the sentiment, but um, I do believe there's an opportunity here. And it should be discussed with Nick Howells regarding the, the hub, because you think in the winter, people are coming into the hub on a Tuesday. Answer is it? It could well be better off run by the hub and he controls, he controls it and everything else. So I'm, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I'm saying I think there should be discussions there with Nick Howells, that whatever anything else is done.
I think we can have discussions about it, but I, I think the purpose.
To, to encourage people, the older people particularly, to go into the hub and, and, and they did have a meal there while they're there and all this.
Yeah. Um, I think we just need, we just need a vote really, whether in, in principle, and it's a generous offer that we've had.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it, it, um, for, for, for me, it's um, it, it's a bit more, because I think there's a lot of factors to go with this, like uh, environmental health, licensing, it's um, who of the staff is going to, to tackle this? How are you coordinating volunteers? So, um, if you're gonna vote this evening, I think the urgency of it was probably generous, because the funds that it closes at the end of July. So I think if you were to say, in principle, you agree, ask me to apply for the money.
Yeah.
We could hold the money in our bank account, and then if we, if this doesn't go any further, we can give it back. But at least we've got the money to then start up a proper project. I, I don't wanna start something, um, um, quick, you know, quickly without the proper plan, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
I just want to say, I'll second that.
Okay, good, good. So let's have a vote on that. Who thinks it's a good idea in principle?
Yep, hands up.
Excellent. I think that was unanimous. Okay. Uh, the day for the next meeting, August is our recess month, of course. Um, so the next meeting will be uh, I wish my glasses were working, twenty fourth of September at six thirteen.
Chairman, can I just raise this very briefly with you? The question of whether we have any meetings in August, because last year, there were a couple of important items that put us in trouble, because we didn't have any meetings in August, right? And I've always believed you should have one meeting at least, if you want it. Now, that means if the, if the town park that issues that he's gonna get answers to or whatever, right? Rather than making a decision himself, sometimes they're reticent to do that on major items, but then he has the right to call the council together about the third weekend in August or something, just for, that's all it.
I think, I think I've got that.
Yes, yes, there is the power to call, um, ordinary meeting. I, I could call them, yeah.
I think we've already approved that we won't have a meeting in August in the approval of the.
The point, the point Bill's making is if something comes up and it needs an urgent decision and nobody's back here until September, then, you know, we're, we're up again. No, Phil, we, we can always call. Yeah. Uh, right, we're going into confidential session now, so can I have a proposal that we, yeah, thank you. Thank you all, bye. Uh, uh, is, is the service elevator okay now?
Yes, it's the sex today.
Oh, it was. Richard, it is working.
Yes, I did. There was some doors that were locked, I couldn't get in.
Oh, right, okay.
Never mind, our manager's dead.